Good evening, everybody. We're just getting organized here. So give us a few seconds. It's gonna be a very dry meeting tonight. I don't have my iced tea. I have water only.
David, extra agendas for the audience?
Yes, Bridget's on her way. She'll be bringing extra agendas.
Excellent, thank you.
She's tied up a little bit in traffic, but she'll be right here.
Okay, so we have, we're gonna try our consent calendar tonight for the first time. So we have two items on the consent calendar. Does anybody wanna add anything to it or take anything off of it? Hearing nothing? Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second?
All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We need to say they were warrants and minutes.
Okay, we can. The agenda was, we had warrant number 101 and minutes from June 10th. And for those of you who watched last night on the planning board meeting and saw the select board shuffle off into another room to conduct some items of business, we conducted two items of business. We issued a permit to use the common for tonight, which is going on Habitat for Humanity, having a picnic on the common. And we also authorized a permit for filming next door in the Emily Dickinson movie it's called.
Yes, it's called A Quiet Passion starring Cynthia Nixon.
So they actually were filming yesterday and we approved their permit yesterday. So that's what we did during that time period. So get started. We have our public comment period at seven o'clock every night now. So is there anyone here who just has an issue they wish to talk to us about?
I have a question about the public comment. I think it's great that you're having this time period, but then as items come up, I assume that the public can also comment on specific items as they come up, is that correct?
No, you have to know what the agenda is and then call your comments during those 15 minutes.
Well, some?
No, 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 no.
That's why I'm asking.
No, this is just for things that are on-
If you've ever been to Amherst, you know that they can run that time.
Have you ever been to Amherst?
No. No, this is for things that you want to come up that isn't on the agenda or something to come up that you want to talk about.
Rather people coming in last minute, like right now, and having something they needed to be on the agenda that would have to wait till next week. You know, we could pre-plan it a week ahead of time and get the facts together, you know?
We just don't do any discussion on it at this time. We just take your information and try to get back to you or have you come back again.
Okay, so we have a 7:15 appointment.
I've got something.
Oh, go ahead.
Real quick, have you given any thought to the email I sent you suggesting that the, what, the July 15th meeting be held in the music room?
We thought about it. We haven't gone anywhere with it yet. We'll know by July 1st. I think we're gonna, I think, well, I'm leaning towards just doing it in senior center, but we'll talk to a few-
Senior Center is giving, there wasn't a parking space available there for the people from the AA meeting there.
All right, so we're still looking at that.
Yeah, we haven't decided.
Right.
We haven't decided yet.
So we can't really start our 7:15 discussion yet, so we'll, we'll start with Holly Road and Laurel Drive, follow up from last night's meeting with the planning board.
So I've prepared for you two actions for Holly Road and for Laurel Drive. We did have the meeting with the planning board last night to talk about roads, private roads in the town of Hadley. We went through the list of roads and talked about the status and future disposition of these roads. Holly Road and Laurel Drive were chief among them, but also were Bayberry, Gooseberry, let's see if I can find my list here. Birch Meadow Drive, we talked about issues of ownership, we talked about issues of condition of the road, talked about issue of procedure according to the planning board subdivision rules and regulations that have been in effect and are in effect now. We also talked about roads that do not require town action, portion of Honey Pot Road, Redsmith's Road, Burke's Way, Golden Court, Green Leaves Drive, Hockenham Woods, and Westgate Center Drive, and those do not require action because either there's some permanent stipulation on those roads that they are going to remain private forever, or that they were not presented to the planning board under subdivision regulations and so have the status of driveways. So we identified Holly Road as a priority, and we talked about costs of upgrading that road, we talked about the need for a title search in order to establish definitively who actually owns the road and what kind of action this town meeting ultimately would have to take in order to convert the road from a private drive to a public way.
Okay, so we still need to get the information on what it's going to take to lay it out. And so probably our next course of action from the select board would be to get together to see the schedule from the fall town meeting, going back to see everything we need to do, and then what we're gonna have to do to actually get it laid out, surveyed, the title search done.
All right, well, we have, we have a survey. We have a legal description of Holly Road. I'm working with our town council in order to determine what would be the costs for a title search and how long would that take. I don't think the cost would be high and I don't think it's gonna take very long. The big time issue here would be the declaration of the select board's intention to lay out Holly Road as a public way, and then to send a letter to the planning board. The planning board has 45 days to make a decision or provide some sort of action with respect to the select board's intention to lay out Holly Road as a public way. If we were to take that vote tonight and if I were to deliver the planning board the letter tomorrow, then we're talking about August 3rd is the 46th day, and your warrant closes on August 29th, 26th rather. So this, these two things couldn't happen simultaneously, the title search and the notice to planning board.
If the planning board doesn't have the information they were talking about, they probably aren't gonna vote to, so we actually can have it on the agenda and leave it on the agenda, but if we haven't done everything, we can move to dismiss it at town meeting. So I just think it'd be better to have the schedule so everyone knows and then have all the information before we actually vote to lay it out, because we, even if we vote to lay it, if we vote to lay it out and something comes up in the title research, then we may have another issue which postpones it. We need to, I think we need to have all our ducks in a row before we make the decision, unless the board wishes to overrule me.
Put it on if we run into a problem, we can pull it off after. Put it on a slate and that's it.
That's what I say, we put it on the agenda, we put it on the warrant for town meeting, but we don't vote to, to lay it out yet until we actually have all the information. It's two steps.
I thought tonight was gonna be the vote on the declaration of intention.
There is nothing, in my view, there's nothing to vote on until we actually have, know what the clear vote we're taking. What is the road? Who owns the road? And how are we going to take the road?
Barry Roberts owns the road, and I thought that was all settled at the last meeting.
We still have to do a title research on that and verify that. There was some question last, at this planning board meeting last night as to whether Mr. Roberts does own the road or not.
We've been waiting now three weeks just since the last discussion when we thought that was all settled, when Mr. Nixon reported that he got all the information that was necessary from Barry Roberts, did the survey, he was the owner, he was gonna sell, sell it for a sum to the town.
So at the planning board meeting last night, members of the planning board questioned that. They do not believe it's correct, so we will have to do the title search. So we can vote right now to start the process instead of going to lay the road out, and that the planning board has 45 days to act. They may, they may choose not to act until we finish the rest of the work, and the 45 days may expire, and then we'll miss town meeting. So if we wait and get all our information together, then vote, then they have 45 days to vote to do their decision, and then it still makes town meeting. It still makes town meeting.
We voted last night to bring the town meeting.
I thought James was saying it wouldn't take that long to get the title search done. So at least if this starts, it didn't sound like it would take more than 45 days to do a title search on this. I mean, because we thought, I thought from what David said before, that he had everything he needed from Barry Roberts.
So what Gelford's saying is if you watch the meeting from last night, there were a couple of questions that came up relative to the possibility of conflicting title. It had to do, there's a derelict deed, is that the term?
Something like that.
Yes.
Derelict way.
So there's a quitclaim deed that Barry Roberts had produced, but there was all, there were also some evidence that some of the properties are, I don't remember how many of them, or all of them, or whatever may have been coming in under this derelict deed rule. There was nothing we heard last night that would indicate to us that there's going to be a problem. This is more, I think, in my mind, a process and procedure question. So I, and where we left the meeting last night is everybody's in agreement that we want to move forward with expediting the Holly Road acceptance.
Yeah.
But with that said, we need to cross our Ts and dot our Is, so we were going back to town council for some clarification on what the best course of action was, because there are a couple of different avenues we can take. And I believe, Gelford, that that's really all, that's afoot right now, so you're just suggesting that we wait until some of that is solidified and then we vote? Is that what you're?
Yes.
Well, if the warrant's closing though on August 26th-
It can still be on the warrant.
Correct.
If we don't get it taken care of by the time town meeting starts that day, we move to dismiss it.
Yeah.
So it gives us more time to put it on a warrant and to keep going. We don't have to have everything resolved when it closes.
But you need the 45 days to happen before-
Not before the town, not before the warrant closes, no.
So it's actually more than 45 days that we have, once we put it on the agenda, onto the town warrant.
You can put it on the warrant before the planning committee's time.
Yeah, we can put anything on the town warrant.
So you shouldn't be hearing anything tonight to make you think that we're swaying from the direction we've been going in.
No, no, it's not the swaying, it's the frustration, honestly, that this has been going on since February, and the planning committee, the planning board knew since February that this was going on, and all of a sudden, yesterday, now there's questions about, you know, the derelict title, and that's, you know-
Well, what I politely suggest, though-
A month or more after, you know, the Barry Roberts information was ordered.
If you pay close attention to how these things work in other towns, what you may find is that these can, these types of issues can actually take years. So I think that we're actually moving fairly expeditiously on this, and everybody's in lockstep to try to do the right thing here.
And it seemed between both boards we were gonna try to fast-track this as quickly as we can, but their major concern was, out of all the properties there, if there was one property where there was a large piece of land that we needed to take, that was more one of their, their most concerned with if someone had a problem with, with us taking that piece of property, if it was, rather than everybody a foot or two, we have to take on someone on that little corner, say 10 feet of it, that may cause a problem. That's, that was, that's what it sounded like there was-
At the end of the road?
At the end of the road or in the middle of the road where that little turn is possibly? We don't know. We, they researched the power, and I guess the power went across, the easement for the power went across everybody's lawn on the west side of the-
The power for the station comes from the water and it goes easterly overland to this.
No, 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 the power for the house is the easement for the power, Verizon and cable on that road.
That's on the west side.
That's on the west side of the road, yeah.
So it's actually moving forward. The weird thing in this whole situation is how this normally operates in other communities is the person who did the development or the property owners come forward and have all this stuff prepared ahead of time, and they present this to the town and the planning board. In this case, you haven't done any of the title work, you're asking us to do the title work, and that's, that's what's, we're willing to do that, so it's going, coming to us a different way than most of them do.
And it's just gonna be a little bit more time?
Well, you know, we did try to get the deeds and all, and the town couldn't find anything.
I understand. So it's moving forward and it is gonna-
Everyone who connected to town lived there, and, you know, I mean, we did as much as we could, given the amount of information that was on hand.
So where we are, if everybody's in agreement, I say we wait, we get the schedule, and we find out how much this is gonna cost us, and then we have, then we still have time to make the decision.
But you already voted last night to put it on the warrant.
We did vote it on the warrant, yes.
So, I mean, yeah, as long as there's no impediment to the original schedule in time, that makes sense.
Okay, Mr. Line? All right. And then Laurel Lane is moving as well, and the property-
So the planning board received our letter, and 45 days elapsed before we heard back from the planning board. The planning board did send a letter saying that they, they had no recommendation because they were looking for asphalt. The next step for the select board is to decide whether Mr. Eisner can produce those asphalt, as he discussed last night, or we can set a public hearing date for the actual layout of the road.
So we're waiting on the other one. Why don't we just keep them all together and see where we're going? I think Mr. Eisner said he was trying to find one water valve is all he has left to find out there.
Correct, Laurel Drive, yes.
Isn't it hard? It's interesting, can't find one.
Probably was put in, maybe it's just-
All right, so that's where we are with that. And as soon as we get the updates, we'll decide whether we'll vote them. Any other discussion on the discussion?
Just to be clear, you said them on yourselves, that you already voted to put it on the warrant?
To put it on the town meeting warrant, yes.
Okay, isn't that the same, is that a different step than the one you were talking about to-
Yes.
Yes.
What's the difference?
Well, we also have to do a, we have to, we have to do a viewing and a laying out of the road.
Yeah.
So we would have to declare, we would have to declare intention to lay out the road as a public way, and then that starts the countdown for the 45 days for comments from planning board. And in that 45-day period, we're also supposed to have a viewing of the road, and we're supposed to do, verify the layout and all the other little things that goes on.
So that's gonna happen simultaneously, but it's already on the warrant for the fall?
Yes.
And if, if the laying out is all in order by then, things will proceed? If it's not, then we'll withdraw it from the warrant, is that correct?
Yes, we'll just miss the town meeting. And then, so the only thing really standing in the way probably is the town agreeing that yes, we should take the road.
That's a little stop?
Yes, that is a stop that shouldn't be taken lightly.
Yep.
All right, so it's time for our 7:15 appointment. How you doing today?
I'm doing good. I'm Tanya Cantwell. I'm from Lansing Heights, and I'm the manager on the town's audit, and I'm here tonight to present the 2014 financial statements and management letter. I'm just gonna give kind of a brief overview of what an audit does and does not do, a very brief overview of the financial statements, and touch on some of the key numbers, results of operations from the year, stuff like that, and then discuss the management letter unless you guys have any other thoughts on how you want it to.
No, that's fine.
So now feel free to stop me any time if you have any questions or comments you wanna There's a, we find there's a general misconception out there that when people hear the word "audit," they think that we come in and we look through every single receipt that was received through the town, or verify that every single disbursement went through the town was processed in accordance with, you know, state or federal laws and regulations, or even your internal town policies. And that just simply is not the case. An audit is not designed to verify that everything, every single transaction was processed properly or, you know, adequately recorded, adequately reported. Instead, audits are conducted under a set of standards known as government auditing standards. At Lansing Heights, we feel that we go above and beyond those standards, but it's just good for you guys to know that an audit cannot and is not designed to find everything. Instead, audits are conducted under a concept known as materiality. Now, materiality will vary based on the size of the entity, so for instance, the materiality for the town of Hadley will be different from the materiality for the city of Boston. Fiscal year 2014, the materiality for the town's general fund, which is your main operating fund, was about $100,000. It doesn't mean we don't look at anything below that level, because we certainly do, it just means that auditing standards say that we should design our tests to focus on transactions and balances at or above that level. As part of the audit, we spend the majority of our time in the more significant or riskier departments, such as, you know, the treasurer's office, the collector's office, the assessors' office, and the accounting department. We perform internal control evaluations over your major transaction cycles, so for instance, your cash receipts cycle, your cash disbursement cycle, and the payroll cycle. And then we design procedures to test those controls to make sure they're operating effectively. So for instance, if we're told that your receivables are reconciled on a quarterly basis, okay, well, show me December. Let me see that you've reconciled and the collect information agrees to the general ledger, or that all invoices are approved before they're paid on the warrant. Okay, we'll test that and make sure that that procedure is being followed. Those are examples of tested controls. We also perform what's known as substantive testing, so to make sure that the numbers that are reported in the financial statements are adequately supported. So for instance, we test to make sure that the cash balances in the general ledger are supported by reconciled bank balances from the treasurer's office, or the irreceivable balances in the general ledger are supported by detailed balance due reports from the collector office. So in a, you know, very quick nutshell, that's what an audit kind of does and does not do and is designed to do. Questions like that?
It sure feels like you look at everything.
We do look at everything. And we always find that one, just, we only did it once, but we have a, it's like a sixth sense, an auditor's sixth sense, a requirement for the job that we have. That takes a break down? Yeah. I know. So in terms of your, your financial statements, a thick document that, I don't know if you guys-
There's extra copy, see now?
We don't want you to feel unwelcome.
Great read, yes, good. So the financial statements are presented under rules established by the Government Accounting Standards Board, or what we like to call GASB. The intention of GASB is to make the financial statements more meaningful and, you know, clearer to the reader, to the readers who use it, so the financial statements. And you'll see in a couple instances later that they're not always successful in doing that, but that is their intention. So typically, there are five parts of the financial statements. There's the audit opinion, the management discussion and analysis, the government-wide financial statements, your fund-based financial statements, and then the notes of the financial statements. Now, the audit opinion is the only part of the financial statements that is ours, and it comes first. Everything else that's reported in the financial statements is town information that we compile in accordance with GASB standards. In 2014, we issued an unqualified opinion on your financial statements, which means that based on the results of our audit, we felt that the town was in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles, which is a good thing. And we have never issued a different type of opinion for the town. After the audit opinion comes the management discussion and analysis, which is like an executive summary to the financial statements. So if you only have time to read a couple pages, that would be a good section to read because it gives a good overview of what's in the financial statements and some of the key results of operations for the fiscal year. After that comes your government-wide financial statements, which if you wanted to look along, they're on pages 12 and 13. If you look on, look at page 12. The government-wide financial statements are GASB's attempt of taking governmental operations and showing it like a business, which not really is meaningful to the users of the financial statements, such as yourselves, because you don't operate like a business, you can't raise revenue like a business, you can't budget like a business. So, you know, their intention is good, but they're just not as meaningful as the fund-based financial statements, which we'll look at later. You know, the bond rating agencies don't spend a lot of time in these financial statements because they're just, they're not how you set your tax rate, you know, you can't, you can't do that type of, those type of procedures with these financial statements. What they do, what these financial statements do is they take in your governmental activities column there, all the, all the town funds, so your general fund, your special revenue funds, your capital project funds, your trust funds, consolidate them into one column, and then add things like your fixed assets, or your long-term debt, like bonds payable, or your other post-employment benefit liability. So, you know, in a way, it shows the true assets and liabilities of the town, but like I said, you can't really do anything with that. You can't say, oh, I need to raise more money to cover this, this huge OPEB liability, because it's not, it's not how things are run. So if you look about three-quarters of the way down, you'll see that net OPEB obligation, that represents the town's liability at June 30th, '14, which is about $4.1 million. A couple years ago, GASB required the towns to obtain an actuarial study to determine what their other post-employment benefit liability, you know, unfunded liability was. And they were nice enough to say, well, hey, you have this huge liability, we'll let you add it to your financial statements over a 30-year period. So you obtain the actuarial study, interpretize it over 30 years, and a little bit gets added every single year. So that's a, you know, culmination of what's been added over the past four or five years. The town has established an OPEB trust fund, and at the end of 2014 had a little over $120,000 in that fund. That balance is not netted against its liability, it's shown separately in the financial statements, it's required to be reported separately. And rate setting, rate-setting agencies look favorably upon town setting this, setting up the OPEB trust fund, because they want you, they want to see that you're showing initiative, you know the liability's out there, and you're attempting to fund it. No one is fully funding it by any stretch of the imagination, but they wanna see that you're making, you know, an effort to put money away to fund the liability. Their, you know, opinion might change in a few years, and, you know, they might say you have to start funding it more aggressively, but right now, they're, they just wanna see that money is being set aside and a trust fund has been set up. So, so the town is doing that, and I'm sure you put more money in said sense, but we're looking back at '14. So effective for the fiscal year 2015 audit, GASB issued a new standard, GASB 68, and they are going to require the town, all the cities and towns, to book the unfunded pension liability associated with the retirement system. So for you guys, it'll be Hampshire County Retirement System. Now, if you look on the last page of the financial statements, page 47-
Can I just ask what that actually means? We belong to a Hampshire pension system, we have to book the unfunded liability of the entire system?
Nope.
Or our- Or our portion?
Your share. Yes, yes, no. Um, so if you look on page, yeah, right, 181 million, that's not, yeah. Um, so on page 47, in the, the middle table there, that is the result of the actuarial valuations in the last page, yep. For the retirement system. In that middle column, that unfunded AAL, the actuarial group liability, that 181 million dollars represents the unfunded liability for the entire retirement system. Now, if you wanted to do kind of a rough, quick calculation of what your liability might look like, you look at the bottom right-hand corner of that page. It shows the town's contributions as a percent of actual contributions. In fiscal year 14, the town's retirement assessment letter represented about four and a half percent of the total of all the assessment letters that the retirement system set out for that year. So four and a half percent of that 181 million dollars is about 8.1 million dollars. Now, GASB is kind of, they're not as nice as they used to be. They're going to require you to book that entire liability in one shot. You're not going to get to amortize it over, you know, a period of time like the OPEB liability. That 8.1 million dollars is going to show up as a liability next year on your financial statements. Things are going to get ugly everywhere. They're not, again, they're not, you know, you have a funding schedule with the retirement system, so it's being funded in that way, but they want people to be aware that there's this liability out there, and currently, no one, no one has it on their books. So the retirement system is not their liability per se. It belongs to all the towns. So, um, the actuaries for the Hampshire County Retirement System are in the process of figuring out how much of that unfunded liability belongs to each town. They're currently working on that right now. It's not just going to be a four and a half percent, there's some other factors, but.
So that's going to make us have two separate huge liabilities. So we got OPEB, and now we're going to have?
Now you're going to have the unfunded pension liability as well.
Wow, I hope we get a new tree in town we can pick from. Wow.
Everyone needs that.
I, I think just to clarify, the unfunded liability for the pension system, by law, they have to, uh, come up with a 20 or 25-year pay-down schedule. This is required by law, and all cities and towns have been working under that system for many years. So we have, there is a system in place for addressing that.
Right.
It's supposed to be like 2040, it's supposed to be fully funded.
Right.
Something like that.
Yeah.
We'll see.
Yeah.
I don't think it's 2040 for this system.
Right.
Hampshire County.
For Hampshire County.
Okay, with the big spin? Did they extend?
No, 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 they didn't extend during the recession.
So, so next year, have that huge liability on, it's going to show up in the government bank, government fund, government, sorry, excuse me, government-wide financial statements. And because the unfunded pension liability is very similar to the, in a lot of ways, to the OPEB liability, in a couple of years, GASB is expected to come out and say, you know, I'm allowed to amortize the OPEB over 30 years, you're going to have to book the whole thing at once. So I would imagine a couple years from now, I would be sitting here saying, next year, you will be, you will show the entire 7.6 million dollar OPEB liability on your books. So more good news.
Which is good for GASB.
I'm all, I'm agreeing with that.
What the impact of that will be?
Um, the impact of booking the unfunded?
Just putting that, not just our town, all towns. What, what does that really mean for us going forward, other than seeing that big number there? What does it, what does it mean, something will be more difficult with our borrowing, or?
I don't think so, because everyone is going to have that liability there, and there's nothing that can really be done about it. You know, I think they're going for shopping, shopping well, that idea here. It's like, there's this, yeah, there's this liability out there, someone needs to recognize it.
I mean, we've been looking at it for the last couple of years, but from what I understand, there's a lot of towns that are just ignoring it completely. There's only one town in Massachusetts that has funded it.
Fully funded it, yeah, right. And very, very few are even anywhere close to fully funding it. There are, you know, depending on the financial situation of some towns, there are putting more money, you know, aside for it, but once it's in there, it really can only be used for that purpose, unlike a stabilization fund, you know, but you can take it out for other purposes. So, you know, I'm a fan of putting money aside for it, but not going crazy over, you know, trying to fund it completely.
Yeah, of course.
You know, no one can. I mean, it's just not, not meaningful.
Right.
Right, I mean, I, I think it is political, you know, and I think it is about shopping law, and it is being used to put pressure on public pension systems. And the, um, post, post office is the one place where they require, right, the full OPEB funding, and it's being used to kind of crush the post office. So I, I think it is something to watch in terms of the political intentions.
Yeah, and they're trying to get people to say, well, there's this huge liability out there, you know, maybe shouldn't pay so much, maybe towns shouldn't pay so much of their retiree's health insurance.
I think they're trying to affect behavior.
They are, yeah, and it's unfortunate because, you know, it's really not the goal, I don't think, at GASB, but it's there, everyone's going to have it. You know, I don't think, right now, the bond rating agencies are going to look unfavorably upon it, you know, and it's something that just needs to be booked, so I just wanted you guys to be aware. That's coming down.
Same thing with social security, they're pushing your date out to retire, but they're hoping you all die before you get to put social security.
Not holding that hook for that, that's for sure.
Award.
Yeah. Okay, so that's, that's really all I have for the government-wide financial statements. You don't see any other questions? Then we move on to the fund-based financial statements, which are on pages 14 and 16. Uh, so if you look at page 14, um, like I said, these are your fund-based financial statements. So they're more in line to what you guys are used to looking at, what GAIL's used to working with, with the exception of a few things, thanks to GASB again. That first column there, that general fund, uh, back in 2011, GASB decided that in order to make cities and towns comparable to state governments, that they needed to book the stabilization fund with your general fund. So that column right there, even though it says general fund, is really your general fund plus your stabilization fund. The reasoning behind that was the states have their rainy day funds, which are tracked in their general fund. And in GASB's mind, you know, your rainy day fund is essentially your stabilization fund. So why not group it with your general fund? And we'll just label it general so people don't understand that, but, so that, that column right there is one of the reasons why we love GASB. The bottom number, the unassigned fund balance number there, of about 2.9 million dollars, 2.1 million of that is the balance in the town's stabilization fund at the end of the year. That represents about 14% of the town's annual budget, which, you know, the recommended range is somewhere between 7 and 10%, so you guys have a very healthy stabilization fund. Certainly, you've done a good job setting money aside in there. The remaining 800,000 or so of that balance is your unassigned, undesigned, unreserved, what other unword can I think of, um, balance in, in your general fund. So it's money that's not then set aside or reserved for other purposes. That is essentially like the starting point for the DOR's free cash calculation, if you want to think of it that way. That, the balance of about 800,000 is about, um, 6% of the town's annual budget, which is a little on the low side, but considering the town has so much in the stabilization fund, it's certainly nothing I'm worried about or concerned about. And, you know, it can ebb and flow depending on what projects you have and what, how much free cash we use every year. So that's really the, the key numbers on there.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, the capital project fund, there's a deficit in the unassigned. Is that just in anticipation of future borrowing? That it's a, okay.
Yeah. Yes, we spent the money, but you hadn't borrowed at that point in time, so the revenue hadn't come in to fund that, so, yeah. Another thing I did want to point out is the second column there, the water fund. For its town purposes, for your purposes, it's considered an enterprise fund. For financial reporting purposes, thanks to GASB, we report it as a governmental fund. So it's shown in your government-wide, or your governmental fund financial statements. The reason for that is, other than, her accounting standards say that enterprise funds are meant to cover the entire cost of the fund. And because the general fund pays a portion of the water enterprise fund debt, it doesn't cover all its costs, and therefore, we cannot show it as enterprise fund on the financial statements. It doesn't change how you guys budget, how you do anything, or from your end, it's, it's an enterprise fund. But just from our financial reporting end, we are required to show it there. So you'll see here, you'll see later, that the sewer is the only fund shown as enterprise fund in the financial statements. Like I said, other than just showing it separately, it has no effect on the town whatsoever. After that comes the notes of the financial statements, which just provides some more detailed information on some of the numbers that can be found on those financial pages. Unless I had any other questions on financial statements. It's a good read, if you guys ever need help going to bed some night, all the 40 or so pages there. Now, next I was going to discuss the management letter, which I was told before I came in here and I met with treasurer and the accountant, that none of these issues have repeated next year, right? Right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, in terms of the management letter, comment number one, we've kind of repeated in some fashion since we started doing the audit. This year, we classified it as a material weakness, which means that based on our testing, we felt that there was a deficiency in the internal control, internal control structure that, um, was so big that a material misstatement could occur and not be detected. That's kind of the definition of a material weakness. So there's no, there aren't enough other compensating controls in place that would prevent something material from, from occurring and not being discovered. You know, last year, the treasurer was still using a manual cashbook, hadn't taken the steps to convert it to Excel or QuickBooks or any other fashion, which I know currently has been remedied, so that will no longer be an issue going forward. And there wasn't really a true reconciliation occurring with that cashbook to the GL. Thought there was, but, you know, when you really looked at the actual balances, it didn't appear that that was occurring, um, similar to prior years. During our, during our audit, it was brought to our attention that there were nine bank accounts that weren't, um, either in the cashbook or in the town's general ledger. These were made up of scholarship accounts or, um, like escrow deposit accounts, so there isn't a whole lot of activity in there, other than interest in, you know, once a year, the type checks in the scholarship accounts. But, um, but still, every single account that's in control of the treasurer should be in the cashbook and therefore should be in the general ledger. Again, I don't think this will be an issue going forward, um, but, you know, it was brought up during the audit, so.
What are the nine accounts, Jonathan Edwards, 350th?
No.
No, 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 those. They're, they are.
School.
Yes, there's four accounts that the school, in individual names, scholarships. So people donated money for a particular person's scholarship, they opened an account, and the statements are coming to the treasurer's office, and as she says, they gain interest, and we send a check over once a year to pay those scholarships. So, uh, there were a number of them, which were, um, they were deposits made by developers, uh, for the, in lieu of a performance bond with the planning board to assure that compliance.
Road tour finished?
Yes.
Okay.
Completion. Um, I'm told by planning board, because of the changes that the town has made in allowing the, um, building a specter to withhold what the occupancy or the business certificates, that they no longer need to have this money set aside. But, and several of them have closed out this year, three of them in the past couple of months, and I think we only have two of those left.
Any on the four roads we spoke of earlier? Any on the four road, roads that we spoke of earlier? Bayberry?
Gooseberry.
Gooseberry?
No. I don't think so.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
No, these are, these are ongoing, current developments. They, like, as in businesses.
Thank you.
The next bullet had to do with, um, during our audit testing, we found an instance where a deposit that went into the bank, it was state money, quarterly money, went into the bank, but never, um, never made it to the general ledger. So it was about 30,000 dollars that, because there wasn't good processes and controls in place, or really good reconciliation, and this happened in November 2013, and it didn't surface until the, in March. So if there had been adequate reconciliation in place, it would have shown up in November 2013. So, um, that was discovered, and it's since been booked in the general ledger, and, um, my understanding is cash receipts and cash disbursements are being reconciled on a monthly basis now, so that should not happen again as well. There's also some adjustments that were, the need to get made in student activity fund, balances in the general ledger, so I don't know if you're aware of how student activity fund works, but the school has control of the checking account, and the treasurer has control of the savings account. All the deposits go in the savings account, and the school has a certain threshold that they're allowed to have in the, in the checking account. So for instance, say it's 25,000 dollars. They're allowed to spend that down, and then when they run low on money, they make a request to the town to replenish that account. That request should be processed through a warrant, just like any other check that's cut from the town. What happened was the request got made to the treasurer, funds got transferred, but it didn't go on a warrant, so therefore, the money got moved, and the balance in the student activity fund account therefore did not agree to the balance in the general ledger for the student activity fund account, because it never got processed, you know, through the warrant. Again, that's been remedied and reconciled, and pretty confident that will not happen again as well.
And that was school again, also?
It was from the school's side, but it was a result of something that the treasurer had, had done. Because the school sent the information over, but they, I don't know if they would necessarily know that it didn't or did go on a warrant, um, so I don't, I'm not sure about that. We also found that three times in the month of July, a direct deposit transfer was rejected for the payroll, which didn't result in anyone not getting paid, because you clearly would have heard about that. But it just had to do with timing around holidays and stuff that should have got done, you know, a day earlier and stuff like that. So just more guarantees to be taken to make sure that, that is done in a timely fashion. And the last comment had to do with, um, you know, since we came out for the audit, cash had not been reconciled, um, which is, you know, kind of a relative term, because cash wasn't really truly reconciled as of June, but no formal process had really taken place since, since June. Which is concerning, because, you know, for assets, you, you have cash and you have receivables, those are your two assets, and those, you know, really need to be reconciled. Cash monthly and receivables at least quarterly, so. So those are the reasons I felt it was a material weakness this year, but I'm pretty confident that that will not be an issue next year. The second comment had to do with our internal control testing over the vendor disbursements, and this is where I was saying that we always find that one little issue that, you know, that seems to slip through, but as part of the audit, we test 25 vendor disbursements from throughout different times during the year, paid by different departments, charged to different funds. We just randomly select, um, different invoices, and we trace those invoices to make sure that there's proper approval on it, that the warrants were signed by the board. Right, um, there's proper approval there. Make sure that the invoice was charged to a reasonable expense account, that the check that was cut agreed to the invoice, and just that the invoice looked reasonable, wasn't paid from a copy or a fax, didn't look like somebody was banned from somebody's home computer, you know, things along those lines, just to make sure that everything looked reasonable. During the testing, we found two instances where we felt that the supporting documentation for the payment was not adequate. One of them had to do with a payment of deputy collector fees. When the collector submits. When the collector submits for payment of the deputy collector fees, she just did a bills payable summary saying, you know, please pay this person if the deputy collector this much money. What we like to see is when the, when the deputy collector turns over the money to the collector, they give her a schedule saying, okay, this is what we collected in motor vehicle excise, that's your money, this is what we collected in our fees, please basically turn around and pay that back to us. So that should really be used as the back supporting documentation, as opposed to like a typed note from the collector's office, which I'm, you know, I'm sure agrees, but it's just a little more accurate and better documentation. I talked to Gail about that during, after the audit and, you know, I think there's a new process.
Are you seeing their turnovers as, is that okay?
That's what I've been doing.
Yep, yep, it's perfect. So that one won't be there, I'm sure. We also found, we tested a credit card payment and for credit cards, we like to see the supporting documentation for the payments that were made with the credit card. And we did find one instance where there was a payment to, I think, like the Gazette recorder for advertising that didn't have an invoice attached, so.
They're actually hard to get. They are very hard to get by an invoice from the Gazette.
Yeah.
That one was mine, the way out, guilty party.
So, so not like a huge, not really huge issues, but because we found two in the twenty-five, we selected, you could extrapolate that to the population and, you know, that's where you get this. Right. And then similar to prior years, the invoices that were being paid from the school didn't have handwritten approval on them. I think their processes procedure over there used to be, I guess it's since changed, but the accounts payable clerk would compile and receive all the invoices and then put them on a warrant and if she had any questions, she would contact the department or whoever was in charge of the invoice. But, and really the invoices should be going directly to the person responsible for purchasing the goods or procuring the services, so they can make sure that, yeah, that's, that's what we bought, or yeah, that person did come and speak, or whatever.
That's what we received.
Right, yeah, exactly. Not just relying on the accounts payable clerk to, you know, double check with people to make sure that that happens. So I did speak to them as well since the audit and they have modified their procedures so that the invoices are going to the department heads or whoever's responsible for the purchase, they're going to sign them and then send them back. Comment number three came from an internal control review that we did in the inspections We went in and looked at the controls over the cash receipt cycle in that department, so we looked to make sure that the cash receipts from the time when they come in the door to the time they get turned over to the treasurer are properly handled, you know, permitting permits, especially in that department, are being tracked properly, things along that line. So what we, what we found was that there were receipt logs being kept for the gas and the plumbing inspectors, permits and receipts, but not necessarily for the building inspectors. There was a form and a process in place, it just, it wasn't a running receipt log that tracked things and, you know, subtotally when they got turned over. So that was a pretty easy fix, you basically just copied what was being done to the other inspectors and it's going to be doing that going forward for the building inspector. So, so that should be taken care of as well. And because it's a small office and there's really one person in charge of collecting the receipts and entering the permits into the system and then turning the money over to treasurer, there's really no controls over that process. So we talked for a little while about what, what can be done that's reasonable, because I mean, we don't want to say, oh, you gotta hire someone else because you need someone else in here, you know, it just doesn't make sense. But the key control in that department is the permitting system. If somebody does not go in the permitting system, they are not going to be issued a permit. If they gave you money and they're not in the permitting system, you're going to hear about it. So the key control is, in my mind, is the permitting system. So we agreed at the end of every month that a report we printed from that system and compared to the general ledger receipts to make sure that all the money collected made it into the general ledger and therefore made it to the treasurer's office as well. Of course, this cannot be done by the clerk, considering she would be the one who's doing, facilitating the process, so the inspectors would be the ones that would be reviewing and comparing that to make sure everything's accounted for, so. There was agreement there, so. In terms of the other issues, which is a couple of small, couple of small things, the town received a state 911 equipment grant last year and stipulation of the grant says that you can purchase the equipment and we'll reimburse you seventy-five percent. As a town, you need to come up with the other twenty-five percent to cover the costs. I don't think that was really communicated very well when the grant was, was written or, you know, when the equipment was bought. So at the end of the year, when the equipment was purchased, the money from the grant had come in, but the town hadn't funded their share. So you ended up with a deficit in that fund, which, you know, you later funded by town meeting appropriation. But it just, proper planning would have been good to know, you know, the time the grant was received or the, the equipment was purchased, that the town was saying they need to fund that money. You could have gotten away without having a deficit in that fund, which hit your free cash, you know, it's only five thousand dollars, but it still reduced your free cash, so. Proper planning there. And the last is to establish an internal audit function. Like I mentioned before, we did a departmental review of the inspections office as part, as part of the town accountant's duties, you know, they should be doing one or two departmental reviews like that on a yearly basis, and I know it's usually a matter of time and resources that prevent that from happening, we've seen that, you know, other places as well. But the key would be to just do a surprise visit to a department, you know, once or twice a year, let them know you could be doing it, keep them on their toes, you know, that, just knowing that might deter, you know, something from, from happening. But, you know, you know, go in and look at the, the same kind of things we did, the controls over the cash receipts, okay, your receipt log said you have a hundred dollars, you have a hundred dollars in your drawer, please tell me it's not sitting on the counter somewhere, you know, you're stamping, never.
It's in my pocket.
It's in your pocket, yeah, that's great. The cash is, not the checks, right. The checks are stamped right away when they're received, so they can't be endorsed by someone else, you know, things along that line. So that's, that's a recommendation.
Tonya, and the last recommendation for other towns, is everybody doing it in-house or are there other towns that are going to outsource that function?
Typically, they, they do it in-house. I don't, I don't know many other towns that would hire someone outside to do it. A lot of times, if there's an assistant in the department, they'll do it, or even like the treasurer's office works in conjunction with the accounting office to, to go together and do it and go count the receipts and stuff like that. You know, it's, it's not too cumbersome, but it, it does take time and you have to, you know, document that you've done it, because as an auditor, if you tell me you did it, unless I see proof, I don't believe, no, don't, not trusting. But, so it needs to be documented, things like that. So it does take a little bit, a little bit of time, but I think once there's a procedure in place, it will.
My question was on the grant we got, so this is kind of the second time we've had a little grant issue come up. So when we get grants, the question I have is, do we book that as a capital account and no expenses are made, no purchases are made until it's booked in?
Unfortunately, it's reimbursable, so you've got to spend the money and then get the money back.
And then get to reimburse. It's still a, it's a grant.
Yeah.
And my, the auditor can jump in on me anytime, but as a grant, it should be booked in as a grant, as the amount of money is there to be spent, and that this is the amount that's eligible for spending. You spend it and it becomes a liability and then you have to ask for reimbursement and then you wiped it out.
That would be full of crow basis accounting, which the town does not really do. I think, I don't know what the process is for.
But I think part of the problem was, I just got the sheet saying that we got the grant and nowhere on that sheet said it was seventy. I need to get the entire grant and if I'd seen that, I would have said something.
Isn't it the state standard contract we get for all our grants from the state now?
You should, and what we've seen in other places is that the, I don't know how you apply for grants or, you know, what happens when you're awarded a grant, but if the select board is aware of that and you get a copy of the grant agreement, at least at that point in time, you'll know, okay, we have to come up with twenty-five percent of this, so let's, how are we going to do it, you know? Is it going to be funded by the department's budget, do they have the available money in the general fund that can be used to fund that? You know, at least they have time to plan it, so I don't know, I don't know what the process is for departments and.
So I guess from my point of view on that, we need to take a look at how to do that, because we've done this twice now in a year. And this one was small, the second one was very big in comparison to what we have issues with. And we, because we should get a contract from the state for every grant and it has to be signed by us. And then it should be booked in that that's the amount that's available and only that amount's spent. And to tell the truth, I don't remember seeing either one of those grants.
But are we supposed to do that when we apply for the grant or when the grant is granted?
When it's awarded.
Because when I saw the award, it was for the entire amount.
But did you see, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was like twenty-nine thousand, when it only came back to twenty-five.
But it said, so you saw a sheet of paper that said you're going to warrant a grant for twenty-nine thousand, it's a seventy-five percent reimbursement.
Didn't say seventy-five percent.
So that, that sheet of paper to the state of Massachusetts means nothing. You can take it into the restroom if you run out of other stuff, that's all that piece of paper will do for you. There's a contract that comes, and I'm sorry I said it that way, I was trying to think about that. There's a contract that comes that's signed with a signature from the state and has to be signed by the town. That's the one that gets you your money back. And that's the only piece of paper that gets you money back. So do, do we actually see that, those two, that sheet of paper?
I don't think we have got that. So I don't know what the process is maybe.
Yeah, it sounds like we need to.
The tenants need to make this look aware, you know, we're applying for this grant, here are the stipulations, we're going to get this much money, but the town has to fund this much. And, you know, not every grant has a match component to it.
Right.
But I mean, I would, I would think he would want to be aware, like, we're going to purchase equipment with this grant, so.
It's an internal control.
Yeah, so we just need to kind of.
So, I mean, it's just better communication probably.
Because I've no issue with chapter ninety, because it's red on my spreadsheet and I keep track of it on an Excel spreadsheet, so I know we don't go over.
Well, can we just put this at a subsequent meeting?
Yeah, sometimes police and fire do grants with, in their own department and we don't always know until they're awarded.
I think that one wasn't police and fire.
Well, so we need to get a motion for a 911, for dispatch. So we need to look at those too, because I think the only people can obligate the town for a grant is us, the select board. So we should have known, we should have known a little more about it and that does fall to us and that was, these two, well, the big one was the one that's been bothering the most.
Is that fifteen issue?
Probably, yes.
Yeah.
But we resolved it.
Okay.
Actually, it's not an issue, because we didn't get the grant and we just funded it out of capital, so it's not an issue.
Keep it in your mind to look for.
It's another issue.
That's a different issue.
It's a very different issue.
Well, I know two of my departments, I've had grants from them and they tell me right up front, it was, it's a fifty-fifty, and they tell me where that fifty percent is coming from. This one, I think it just got in between everything.
So I think that's one thing we have as a select board, because we are responsible for those and we have to sign for those agreements with the state.
Well, to be honest with you, I mean, what I'd, what I'd like to see all of this expanded to, and obviously, you know, there've been some significant changes, you know, as you pointed out internally, so I mean, I have confidence that we aren't going to have repeats on this, but it's one thing to be confident about it and it's another thing to force reporting on it. So, I mean, I, I think that all of this is leading towards, we need to have really, we'll bolster our reporting between us and the accountant and the town treasurer, because there hasn't, if there was adequate oversight by the select board, having, I mean, it's appalling to me to have this sort of repeat. I mean, it's really not okay. But the select board, we haven't had a mechanism, a formal mechanism in place to say to the town treasurer and the town accountant, please come and let us know where you're at with reconciliations and all of this stuff, just so we can have assurances it's being done.
That's true, but you also have an elected treasurer.
True.
Yes.
So, I mean, really, you can bring the town's people in here and they can, you know, hold them accountable, but as a board, you don't have as much control over an elected official.
We can't control it, but we can ask the question.
You can, you can.
Checks and balances.
Yeah, you can, but they, they're not required to report to the board.
They might want to.
No, I agree, and, you know, I totally support that, I think they should, but, you know, it depends where you, who you have.
And if, if there are any other best practices, for lack of a better way to put it, relative to this, I mean, we would love, I would, I would love to speak for myself, but I think, I think our whole board would like to hear how other towns maybe accomplish this, just to make sure again that there's some level of oversight when you have these elected positions.
Communication.
Yes, I mean, just for communication.
And we not knowing that this needed to be done either, not knowing that, you know, Mike should have brought forth, you know, a grant and we were supposed to match it. Seventy-five percent you were going to get, I mean, you know, this is just a matter of us being aware now.
Yeah.
That this needs to be done, so.
I know, I think we assumed it for too long, is what she's trying to say. There's been multi-year grants too that, that we've kept a pretty good eye on, you know, that we've got over the years.
So any other comments, questions?
Yeah, just, just one general question. I mean, again, you're in and out of a lot of towns, small towns in particular, always staffing's fraught with danger because we're, you know, spread so thin, but. Would you imagine that we could benefit, it sounds like you're recommending that we have more hours, for lack of a better way to put it, put into some of these financial functions, I mean, specifically the internal controls you've identified?
Yeah, that certainly would help in, in some ways. I don't, there aren't, you're, I don't have a lot of internal control issues, but there are a couple that could be addressed and I would think that, you know, offering them more hours would allow that to some degree, I certainly think that. You know, every town's a little bit different and some people want more hours and some people don't want more hours, you know, it's kind of, you don't want, you get a paid one, right?
Yeah, no, no, I've got two other towns now.
So I mean, you know, certainly Joan could do an internal, like, the internal reviews or, you know, she's fully capable, she's familiar with all the departments and would, would be able to do that successfully, so there's, you know, there's those options other than Gail who, you know, it's the.
Gail, do you have any comments you wanted?
I, I actually do think we can use more hours, but I think that that's going to take us a little bit of time to develop, because it's hard right now to tell the number of hours are they going into learning, catching up, changing systems, or are they in ongoing need of hours? So I, we're really trying to plan this out.
I've got that ten-hour position, but right now, until I get a second computer, it doesn't work, because all I'd be doing are sitting, swishing my thumbs and with the move over to doing the asbestos project, it's going to be hard enough putting us all in there, let alone having another person. So hopefully, you know, once that's all done, you can sit down and seriously get the need so I can have that ten-hour system.
All right.
And I would think if you want to set up something, whether it's quarterly or whatever on a regular basis, to have all the financial people come in and talk and address what these issues, I don't, you know, elected or appointed, I think that everyone has an interest in bringing this information out, they love it.
Thank you very much again.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there someone hearing about net metering? That would be, all right, we'll skip that one.
So Mass, actually, Mike, are you here to talk about net, Mass dot?
Well, they're scheduled to come in, I believe, the first meeting in July to speak to us about the roof nine projects, a couple of things that were brought to light, I believe the board has copies of them. One was the letter that I requested waiver from the control density fill for the town of Hadley for the second section of roadway over here, I won't get into the letter so much, but they're requesting testing of the density of the soil, doing Proctor testings and they're requiring ninety-seven percent compaction on the. doing proctor testings, and they're requiring ninety-seven percent compaction on the, on the trench that if we did not use global fill on, and they wanna use binuclear methods. So it, I, talking to the state about this, basically, I don't think it's gonna be much of a cost savings not to use global fill compared to using global fill after we have to hire someone to do all this testing. If there's actually a different soil type as we're going through the trench, that house also has to be tested through a proctor, and they want that every hundred feet. So that's something we can talk to the state about when they show up on the first meeting of July. Another issue that was brought to light that I believe the board has copies of is the plantings that they are requesting the town to, actually, they have a state access form filled out, but not signed, of course, for the town of Hadley, which, I'll describe it, it says planting beds being constructed as part of a project. One planting bed at each of the four corners of the intersections of Route nine and forty-seven. I believe you have some information from the historical commission on that dating back a few years, that the historical commission requested some planting in that area.
Who's gonna take care of that, Mike?
And part of that agreement.
Go for it, he's doing it for Anderson, the road found it out.
Very well, too.
Part of the agreement is that the town has to agree to maintain the.
Basically, the guy in the loader in January, you know, trimming.
The trimming, forever. So basically, what it boils down to is the different type of plantings that they want, that the historical commission wanted. When they show up at our next meeting, the first meeting in July, we should bring that up and ask them. We, actually, David and I spoke to David Bly about this as link, about the planting, and he said that it was something that the town requested be done.
Through the historic commission?
Correct.
But not the select board or anybody else?
No, that's why we're bringing it here. This was the, this was when we had our meeting with the Mass DOT. This, this is Doug Outlegasor Thomin, and I thought that we should bring this to the select board's attention in advance of your meeting with the Mass DOT, in order to see if you, what your thoughts were about this. It would require a commitment on the part of the town to maintain the plantings. We have the example up in Sunderland, where you have the intersection of one sixteen and forty-seven.
Town doesn't take care of that, though.
The town has a volunteer who handles that, looks beautiful, but there's line of sight issues.
There is.
Plantings are, are high.
In Sunderland?
Yeah. In Sunderland.
How do we make out with the black ornamental light posts?
They'll look nice.
What about the ornamental light posts?
That's what I'm asking, how we made out with that, as opposed to the planting.
I believe that's part of what is on their design, of what they want to do at the intersection, showing, I believe the board has a copy. I took this off, yes, we made copies of it, of what they wanted planned.
Who is, repeat that again, who is that, they?
The state, the person that designed this in conjunction with approval from the historical commission.
Say one that wanted sidewalks, and the poor people can't walk on the sidewalks in the winter, because they push all the snow on top of the sidewalks? Correct.
So the chair of the historic commission who requested this isn't there anymore?
Correct.
Marla Miller here.
So we're meeting with them on July first, so I will try to, I will reach out to the new chair and ask if they still, if they still wish to have this, and then what they're, if they still wish to have it, and what their plan is for making this kind of work a little better. And then we'll ask some more information before the July first meeting.
I'm sorry, go for it, who is the chair, is it Ginger?
Ginger.
I kinda had an idea. Uh-oh.
Uh-uh.
Well, we have several businesses in town that, I'm wondering if that, would they would like to, I was gonna run it by the board, if they would like to do the plantings.
Maintain a corner.
Maintain the corner, and maintain the, since I don't think anybody right now is maintaining the sign as they come into Hadley. We did have someone that did a great job, but unfortunately, she has moved out of town. I'm not sure, she used to have some help, I'm not sure who that is at this point.
She moved out of town, too.
So my thoughts were, is if we maybe approached some local people with businesses, that they may wanna, you know, do the plantings, and then they could put a sign saying in, you know, naming their business as.
Maintained by.
Maintained by so-and-so, and maybe that, you know, that would be nice for them to do that, and maybe we could do that on a yearly basis, that we wanted to rotate it, or.
You can even do service organizations too.
Service organizations.
Sometimes you'll see, like, you know, Kiwanis, or Boy Scouts.
Or, you know, Eagle Scouts, or somebody that wants a project, or.
So, so do we wanna keep the plantings and the plants for now, and then work on trying to get volunteers and?
All due respect, this letter says that came to Marla Miller from Mr. Massey, or went there, says that the suggestion in your letter concerning the space for ornamental flower beds would also be welcome, as though it sounds like Mr. Massey's suggestion of the flower beds. Paragraph two, section, lines two.
Well, regardless.
They're not known for being very planting.
Oriented.
We would need to have a plan, so, I, but, I mean, like Joyce, I mean, I, I'm not opposed to it being, looking good.
With our experience with them planting sidewalks on the side of the highway and covering them up with five feet of snow, I would say put grass in. We would have to talk to the historical commission again.
So I will talk to the historical commission. If you wanna talk to some of the people, contractors who do landscaping, and see how they accept that, then we'll have more information for the first, and we'll go from there. Do we need to talk about the waterline project, how far we're gonna go? Have we finalized what we wanna do with the waterline project on this?
I think that.
Believe, David, you have an article for a fall town meeting for that?
Right, so, so we know we have to raise money, we're gonna have to borrow money for this waterline project. You have the project replacement of the waterline within the Mass DOT project areas, which is from Wally Street to just about where the Farm Museum is, and we have a price of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
They're not going all the way to East Street?
So that's the first part of it. The second part of it would be an additional eight hundred thousand dollars to take the line outside of the Mass DOT project area from the Farm Museum to East Street, and replace that line there. We're gonna have to do some financial planning about this, because under both cases, we're gonna have to borrow the money, and the water rates are gonna have to support the debt. And I put together a couple borrowing scenarios, passed some of it out to folks downstairs, but I'm just gonna pass this along. First one shows the project area only for four twenty-five, and the first payment would be thirty-five thousand, five hundred fifty, declining to twenty-nine thousand in the second year, and then declining down to a final payment after twenty years of twenty-one thousand, six hundred. That's at two percent interest under the state SRF borrowing. The second scenario shows the entire project at one million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, that's the project area plus the extension. And the first payment would be ninety-three thousand, three hundred dollars at two percent interest. And I think that we need to look at what our water receipts are, the timing of water billing, and make some decisions about the scope of the project based upon affordability, as well as the practical matter of, of the need to replace that line, which is how, how old.
Oh, very old, almost a hundred years ago.
Old as dirt.
Has a lot of water rates on it.
The Mass Highway's not playing, do that section this year?
Within five years.
We talked, we talked with them, and they talked about five years, and we said, could you be more flexible with that schedule? And they didn't make a commitment, obviously, but they did say maybe they could do that section in two or three years.
So if we had our work done, they would probably consider it a little bit quicker than if it wasn't.
I think that's something that we should raise with Mass DOT when they come here and talk for, for.
Okay, now you've just changed it. We were looking at a bank loan at two percent originally?
Yes, sir.
And, no, are, are we able to get that SRF fund for two percent or not?
We would have to apply for it.
And if we don't get it, what happens? Because we went through this with the SURE a couple times already, and we weren't eligible.
You would have to borrow at the market rate, which giving some indications that interest rates are gonna start rising, maybe by the end of the year. There's a big story about Janet Yellen and what she was pronouncing.
The engineering for the second phase, this is just the ballpark figure that I've got a long panel, probably outdated, at least four, six months old, was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars, just for the design of the second section over there. And that was based on.
Was that folded into the cost number?
Is that included in there?
Yes.
It's included in there.
Then the eight hundred also includes us patching the roadway. Where if we were going along with the Mass Highway project, we wouldn't patch, we just have to have pipe work, backfill, and take it.
That's why I asked for the waiver for local fill.
Does there a impact fee as to what the cost, what, what the impact would be to the expenses now per gallon, cubic foot? Have we done an impact fee?
No.
Okay.
All right, so actually, do we have an updated schedule on it? If we had, if we told the engineers to start now, how long would it take them to actually do, make the design changes we wanted?
That I would have to ask, I couldn't even venture a guess, we don't have the second section, the money for the second section, actually, the first section either, so we did not commit anything to the engineering firms yet for the second section. The first section is already out of sign, which is right in that set of plans, but the second section is not.
So you can just ask them what the.
He was pretty specific, like, it was about four months ago, you said, Mike?
Yeah.
When we talked to him?
Yeah.
And he, he was pretty solid with that number for the second section.
Yeah.
Could you give a timing for the design time, Bill?
Didn't, didn't really ask them, because I didn't know what the board wanted to do, pursue both or just one, so.
Well, we've already got the first part of design.
Correct.
So could you ask them for a time schedule to design the second phase? And then, that actually would help us, because they actually plan to start construction on this section, and.
Supposed to be June two thousand sixteen, sixty.
Yeah, so they're gonna bid it in October, and then allow us to start as soon as, oh man, maybe they can start, like, on graduation, they can.
How far out are the SRF loans?
Not before.
Are they available, are they not available?
We would have to start, we would have to start.
And the process would, that's what I mean.
Yeah, this summer.
Then you'll find out.
But then we don't have.
You're available, you'll be able to qualify for it.
So we're meeting with our chief financial advisor on Friday about this and other issues, and we'll also be developing for you the information about the water rates, and what kind of timeframe you need in order to start thinking about this for the first payment on the bonds. I don't think that you would see a first payment until.
So you'll have that.
Fall of two thousand sixteen, after the project was done.
Well, if this is, in the worst-case scenario, it's ninety-three thousand, this is starting point, and that's a diminishing schedule, right? So if it's ninety-three thousand, it looks like total water receipts are like one point one?
Yes.
About, right? So you're looking at.
Double.
Just about ten percent, so eight points, something percent. I know it's not that neat and tidy, but.
In the ballpark, I think it says seven point five percent.
No, I mean, the, the impact of this relative to what people are currently paying for water?
Eight percent.
You can, you maybe think about using water reserves to offset the impact of, of increase.
Right, but there, mix and match, yeah.
Actually, maybe we should just schedule a little work in, meeting outside, as a separate time, and we can all just sit down, we'll talk about this, and only this item.
That'd be a good idea.
Sure.
So, while we start pulling information together, have our meeting.
They're gonna have that meeting next, this Friday, so get in some more information for us.
Yes.
Yeah, after that.
Yes, after that.
Okay, talk about it July first.
Notice this separate meeting, we sit down.
Right, but I mean, talk about.
Well, when the plan be, yes, that's fine. All right. So our police chief is here to talk to us about something he wishes to do. His plan to cut back on overtime, which we keep asking him to take a look at, and he's come up with a proposal, or he's come up with a method he wants to do, try it for two months.
Correct, it's a, it's a temporary, temporary plan. It really is the first step in kind of a long process that's gonna take cooperation between a lot of different entities in town. It's gonna, you know, police union, finance committee, the board, and myself. This is really the first step, and the thought process is, because it's a slight alteration in the way that we do business normally as far as contracts go, it had to be presented to the police union to vote on. Because it does, it does alter, it doesn't necessarily alter the language in that contract, but it alters our, our normal practices. The idea behind it is that we would like to advance the department and cut the overtime at the same time. It doesn't rationally make sense, those two things go together, but when you start talking about minimum staffing and the wages that we are paying folks at five and a half, as opposed to straight rate, I think that, like I said, with, with cooperation with the different entities in town, I think we can, can really do this. So my proposal to the union was that we add additional part-time and special officers throughout the summer months. Initially, I was looking at June, July, and August, that's not really feasible, June was out of the question, just because of where the budget is at right now. And July and August, to do the full month, really was just, it's gonna be a lot to ask for, for a brand-new chief to go to the finance committee and ask for that, but did the additional funding to do that. So what I thought was, is that we could try to add additional officers, very similarly, the way that we do now, which is additional officers on the so-called more busy nights of the week, which would be Thursday through, through Saturday, Thursday through Sunday. So what I did was that I put together a plan for them to add these additional officers while our minimum mandatory staffing during the summer months is at its lowest, which is two officers. We would add a part-timer or special only, as many of these shifts throughout Thursday through Sunday, I won't bore you with the details, as we possibly can. And each time one of those officers is working and a full-time officer takes the day off, they will be granted the day off with, with a proper approval. And because of the staffing levels, we would not be required to fill that shift with overtime. We wanted our minimum mandatory staff in utilizing that part-timer or special officer who is currently on duty. So essentially, it is, the average overtime rate as of now, before contract negotiations come up and salaries change, is a little over thirty dollars an hour. Part timers and specials' rates vary, but you're looking at anywhere between seventeen and a half, and, and a special is fifteen dollars an hour. So it's essentially, if a special's working a shift, we don't have to fill an overtime shift with overtime, it's, you're literally saving half a month. So that was the plan. It was presented to the union a couple of weeks ago, they chew on it a little bit, and to their credit, they voted last night to accept the proposal, because it is a temporary proposal, and I feel that the way that they look at it is that is the same way that I do, that this is really the first step in, in moving our department forward. So what I wanted to do was, was present the idea to you folks, you have it more defined on paper, that's really just in a nutshell. And I just wanted to, to talk to you folks about it and, and see if there's any questions, comments, or connotations to the idea.
So this is a proof of concept? Is that really what you're trying to accomplish?
That is exactly what it is. That's the.
So you see how it goes?
Right. I, I presented the, the full concept to the finance committee just this past budget cycle. They seem to really like it. They seem to really feel like the theory in and of itself was, was really kind of where they were hoping that this would go. Unfortunately, it's a lot different if I go through our schedule book and say, this is what would have happened had we had these extra officers on, whereas I can actually show them real-life numbers.
And you really can expand out of this. I mean, if this works, you can start this throughout the year.
Well.
And it's, it's a good way to get your part-timers and your specials in there and training with the full-time officers. I mean.
Well, you're right.
This is really no, an open-ended proposal, really.
That's really what it is right now. You're right. It would be, it would certainly be beneficial. But the hopes is that, you know, the way we stand right now, number one, it would have to be represented to the union, and it would no longer be a temporary thing, and I, now we're talking big changes here. But the, the, really where we stand right now is a part-time police officer makes the same rate as a starting full-time officer here, as we stand right now. So with the amount of hours that we are backfilling with our part-time officers, we're getting into situations where some of these officers are getting benefits. So my thought is, let's look at this from kind of an outside-the-box perspective and look at possibly turning these part-time officers into full-time officers, full-time positions, and eliminate this overtime problem altogether. While at the same time adding additional staff into our department and moving us forward into a place where we really need to be. But yeah, that's correct. This is really a proof of concept to just show real-life numbers rather than theories.
Yeah.
Then you and I were talking about the structure of the, the numbers in order to test this in a number of different ways by showing overall, over the two-month period, what kind of impact it would have upon, but also within each week you could show from, from segment of days to segment of days, you can show that, that impact.
Exactly. I, you know, like I said, the figures that I gave the, the finance committee are, are, are literally staggering. And I'm not saying that because I'm in charge of the department and I think this is a good idea. If, if this, in my, in my thought process, the way that I see this going, if everything falls into place appropriately and the contracts language is altered successfully, we're looking at being able to reduce overtime, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty percent. If we extrapolate this out throughout the year. So that's why I'd like to do this because we really can, we've got a good idea as to what's really going to happen. And on top of that, the summer months, they, they quiet down for us with this, with the students gone, but extra staffing on the road is always what we've been looking for in the summer months. Two officers on duty sometimes really isn't enough. So this will give the officers an opportunity to have, when no one takes a day off, to have that extra staffing on the road. And the benefit to the town is on those days when someone does take the day off, we would have normally had to fill it with overtime. We no longer have to do that during these shifts.
I commend you, Michael, for bringing this forward as a strong chief and, you know, showing us what you've been working on since your induction into being the chief. You had said you would take a stab at reducing this, and you certainly have. So I commend you for bringing it forward and showing us you are a strong chief, and I wholeheartedly support you on this. And I also would like to commend the officers for taking the initiative before even negotiations started to at least give this a try. So, yeah, kudos to all of you.
Any other comments?
It absolutely looked like it's going to work. I just hope we can expand on it.
Yeah, I, I agree a hundred percent. I think the officers do as well. I just, we just need to find the best possible way to do it.
Go step by step.
Going to have a tough, tough couple of days, aren't you, two in a row?
What's that?
The next two days are going to be pretty rough on you guys with, with the traffic on Route nine, huh?
Yeah, yeah, we're, Sergeant Cook has actually been working on trying to get together with, with a lot of the workers out there. We're going to try to figure out a, a better plan for how we're going to do this. It's going to be rough, but we'll get through it.
Start paving Route nine tomorrow morning, four o'clock.
Four to four, four to four, and I think the other ones will be, you know.
Stay up about nine.
I'm working right past it. Do you have a backpack?
Yeah, go, go other ways.
Good day to fight.
It's a good day for people to just take two days off.
Exactly. Like that idea.
All right. Thanks, chief.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mr. Westover, you wish to talk to us?
Great, I'll try to keep it short. Thanks. I think you're going out of work. Before I show you the map, let me just give you a little background. So the, the question is whether the town will be willing to accept the gift of a trail and parking easement at Old Mountain Road from Mount Hoyo College. So just by background, my firm, Conservation Works, is under a year-and-a-half-long contract with kind of a client commission to develop trail connections in five different places in Hadley and South Hadley relating to the Connecticut River and relating to Route forty-seven, which is the scenic highway. And this particular project is basically to improve the last hundred yards of what used to be the M and M Trail, and it's now the New England National Scenic Trail, thanks to Don, Don Olver. You, if you know the location, you, you've come by the Mount Hoyo College Outage Hub cabin on the way down to Old Mountain Road. And the last hundred yards is pretty steep, and the, the last few yards is almost vertical. So if you have kids or dogs or something, you end up in the middle of the road before you can slow down. You know, I, I run the Seven Sisters Race every year, and, and I don't mind running on rocks, but a lot of people don't. So the, the idea is to close the last short section of the trail and move it over, off of land of, that belongs to Buckhouse, onto land of Mount Hoyo College, and end up at a very small parking area that we would like to put in, just to create kind of a, a better trailhead. Something rather than, you know, ending with a bang at the, at the edge of the road. And we've met with just about all the neighbors several times, met with the Hoyo Range Advisory Committee, and worked closely with Mount Hoyo College in coming up with a design. I've talked to Dave Nixon several times about this. And I was out with Ed from Hadley Public Works the other day. We walked the site, and then he talked about it with Michael Mosky later, and we're going to follow whatever suggestions they have because drainage is a concern along the road there, and we want to make sure that's done correctly. The funding is in process. We, we have applied for a federal land access program grant called CLAP. We don't know we'll get it yet. There is a possibility of a recreational, recreational trails grant. We've applied for that too. So it's, you know, it's a work in progress. And does everybody have the, the map? So I don't know, I need to hold this up, but.
Where's Mr. Buckhouse's property now that it comes out on?
Right, right down here.
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, the Seven Sisters Race turns around right there. They're, they're good enough to make their land available for that, and then here's the real steep part that'll be closed.
Yeah.
So this will be kind of diagonally running across the slope with a, you know, very, very gradual angle. And then the little parking spot is here. This is not on land of D C R, which was recently purchased from the Barstows. It's, is on the corner of the Mount Hoyo College land. And there's some, there's some extra details if anybody wants to look. The, the parking detail, and then the draft easement, and another color map, so.
So right now, do snowmobilers or anybody else use this trail?
Not really. I don't know, know that it's, that they're prohibited, but it's a, it's a hiking trail, and this part is definitely too steep for snowmobiles anyway. So we're not expecting that kind of use.
But it will be prohibited anyway, right?
Yeah.
Altering vehicles.
Yeah, especially on this part. One question is the ongoing maintenance of the parking spot and the, and the new section of trail. And I, I talked again to Dom Sacco with D C R today, and he said, yes, D C R will be able to monitor the, the site at a low level because, you know, they're under a lot of stress. They've lost people. And we may have to call on some of the partner organizations that have worked on this whole project with this.
In talking with somebody up in Salisbury, they're doing a waterway up there, and he had said that there were a lot of, that had taken the early retirement, which
Yeah.
Really cut their.
Yeah.
But D C R has also posted where they shouldn't have posted on our property in not wanting people to pass certain areas going towards the reservation. Is that correct? Out in that area, and, you know, really didn't have any business doing that, but this here section, do we have to, have you met, seen this, Michael?
Yes, I have. I went up there with Ed, looked at it, and beat on Michael Mosky, if you don't know.
Yeah, sure. All right.
I looked at that, and your proposal for a culvert pipe, I believe, was mentioned for the access for the roadway to get up to this. Experience tells me that there's a tremendous amount of water that can come down that road in a heck of a hurry. And I am hesitant to say, yes, I agree with a culvert pipe. I was looking at the layout of the land. Is there any way that you could just put some rock in there to take away such the steep incline that you have and use the rock as your driveway instead of a culvert pipe? Because, yes, we all know that road is gravel. And in the wintertime, we have to plow it. In the summertime, we have to grade it. And it's been prone to washouts. We had one there probably fifteen years ago. They cost the town over twenty-five grand to fix because there was just a too much water, too fast off the mountain and off the road. And any obstruction, a culvert pipe, you're not going to have much cover, cover over this culvert pipe because of what you have to work with there. You're probably going to have a foot of cover or two. So that's not really adequate, and the size of the pipe would have to be at least as big as the one that is there that crosses the road just towards South Hadley side, a little bit farther, let's say not much, probably fifty feet at most. So I was going to.
Yeah, I think you may very well be right. Well, I'd like to work with you on that just to, just to make sure it comes out right. And the neighbors are really concerned about the drainage, and, and I know it's a concern of yours, so. We'll make sure that's done right.
Right.
How big is the parking, sorry, go ahead.
Then there was the situation of the trees. I guess you have some there marked to be cut?
Just a few. You, you got to get in, and there's one dead tree that'll come out wherever you go in, but otherwise, not much.
Not much. I saw you had some ribbons, and I saw what the ribbons were for your access.
Yeah, the ribbons are just to mark the perimeter, not to mark trees to be cut.
Right, right, exactly.
How many cars do you figure are parked in there?
Six, roughly. It'll be forty by sixty, so you go in and you park three on the left or three on the right. So it's not very big, but it'll get some of the, you know, some of the cars that are often parked along the road into a safer spot.
And the reason you want us to hold the easement?
I think it's appropriate because, okay, for one thing, Castro Land Trust is not really interested in doing that. And somebody's got to hold the easement, and I think in this case, we'll, we'll make sure that the, the maintenance is covered by, for one thing, there's a partnership about Appalachian Mountain Club and D C R and, and a few others that are working on this. But just to hold the easement.
So we'll hold the easement and have no responsibility for maintenance, and the maintenance will come from the, the trail organizations. And there'll be a side, side agreement with them that they're, what they're going to maintain.
Exactly.
To make sure that.
Yeah.
Mount Hoyo College is happy and we're happy.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that how, I mean, that's kind of how I've seen it in the past.
Yeah.
So to accept an easement, do we have to have permission from town meeting to accept?
I'm not entirely sure of the legal ways that we do this, and I'm thinking a town meeting vote is, is ultimately going to be necessary.
I don't think so. I know from my experience that a gift of either land or an easement, but we'll need the, the signatures of the select board, but not a vote at town meeting.
So for tonight, I'm willing to say we're in conceptual support of this. And then we'll, we'll research. Legality, how, how we do this, whether we got to go to town meeting or not. And then if we can get an agreement with the, the trail groups.
Yeah.
About maintenance.
Yeah.
And then we can look at that as well because we, I don't think we want.
How big of an area is that easement? Copy it out of there.
Oh, well, the easement is, the parking lot is this size. And the easement is on the trail.
The trail easement's about five hundred feet worth, so linear, linear distance.
So you're talking trail and the parking lot?
Trail and parking. They're both defined in the, in the easement documents, yeah.
And Mount Hoyo College still owns that property, they didn't get the D C R or Castro.
Right.
So are we in conceptual agreement pending we research the.
Bring more details.
Yeah, let me get, yeah. So, all right.
Yeah.
We need to vote on that.
I think, I think if you want to take a conceptual agreement vote tonight, then we can work out the details with council.
That'd be helpful.
All right.
I would actually rather that we somehow posted this and got some impact from the neighbors so that we, before we, before we acted on that. I, I, I think we need to notify the neighbors and have them in here and find out what their feelings are regarding this.
If they want to come in.
If they want to come in. If they don't want to come in, I understand that too.
So.
Can we do a conceptual agreement with.
Subject to?
Subject to, I'll make a motion, we do a conceptual agreement subject to notification of the, of butters for our next meeting.
Well, for.
For, for our next meeting.
For our scheduled meeting.
For scheduled meeting.
Are, are you talking butters or the general neighborhood? Because I know there are quite a few people that were interested in my want to come in, even if they don't directly buy.
The general neighborhood, I think, because I think we've had, we've already had some other neighbors come in.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah.
And the, the approval from town council.
I will second that.
Right, so we're willing to continue looking at this, schedule a public hearing, do some research on how we have to do the takings, and look at the maintenance agreement between us and, and the trail groups. All right, well, any other discussion? How was the favor?
All right.
Bye. We're off and running.
Very much. You want me to keep the maps?
Thank you.
Here you go.
No. All right.
Are you here for something specific, water abating?
The water abatement.
All right.
Am I up?
We'll do the water abatement next, yes.
Great. I just want to start out by saying, if you guys try to raise my water rate by eight percent, I have no problem with that. Consider me on board a hundred percent.
As long as.
Yeah. Do you have a copy of what I?
Yeah.
Submitted?
Yeah.
I came in before, but maybe just for the camera, I'll repeat briefly. I live at Five West Street, and my wife and I have lived there for a year and a half, and four months after we moved in, we had the worst storm. I mean, winter really practically recorded history. We had an undetectable water leak that ran through the winter until the town's almost fourteen thousand dollar water bill, and sent somebody out, and we toured the property. Were unable to determine the source or location of the leak. However, testing, turning off the water, listening at the meter, we were able to determine that there's definitely a leak. And I got a plumber out immediately and had it fixed that day. I then requested before the select committee, special circumstance abatement for this free recurrence, and I did receive an abatement for the sewer portion of a hundred percent and a partial abatement for the water supply of fifty-two percent roughly, which I'm very grateful for. And I wanted to just thank you for hearing me and apologize for taking up your time and for the lost water and for the fact that this went undetected. But I would just like to officially request that the same consideration be given to the second bill, which came in less than the first because I had a.
second bill, which came in less than the first because I had it fixed. However, it's still extreme, I could say, with the leak. And if I were to receive a sewer abatement, and I, I remember Mr. Mauring, you actually said last time, you know, about a hundred percent sewer abatement, you were like, well, theoretically some water went through the sewer. So I copied a typical water bill which would put sewer at about a hundred and forty-two bucks. So I'm just requesting that I, you consider sewer abatement minus typical sewer and that you consider water abatement even to what you did on the previous bill, which would result in a total cost to me for the leak at over fifty-six hundred bucks.
Mr. Mosky?
As you know, we have a letter from the collector's office pertaining to the holding these locations to Five West Street and the Sixth French Street, and she has recommendations on the amounts to bait for the water and the sewer. And the amount to bait the water for number five West Street would be seventeen hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents and to bait the sewer, three thousand seven hundred and four dollars and eighty cents. That is for number five West Street. That is from the collector's office. I believe the board has that.
And you agree?
Yes.
And at the time that Mr. Brennan came to us in the first place, we had detected the, he had detected the leak at his property after the change of the billing cycle. So that we, at that time, we acknowledged that, that there would be a spillover into the second billing cycle, which is what we see here today.
All right. And I would just like to add, I also sat through an audit review as for the punishment for, for the water leak?
I guess it's some sort of chip.
Yeah.
I would like to take a recommendation.
Just a quick comment on the sewer. I guess he wasn't, I wasn't here for this first round of questions. I guess he wasn't billed that off for the sewer.
Why was that completely abated?
Right.
It should have been a hundred and forty-two dollars, right?
Right. Guilford, I guess you mentioned that it was completely abated and some of it had to go through the sewer, correct? So we looked into that and the usage for the last cycle, full six months of reading with ten thousand three hundred cubic feet last abatement granted, was incorrect. There was no sewer charges that were billed at all. The usage for the six months, ten thousand three hundred times two cycles equals twenty thousand six hundred. We divided that, twenty thousand six hundred by one hundred cubic feet, multiplied that by the rate and what he should have been charged for the sewer, according to what we calculated out, was nine hundred and forty-seven dollars.
So are you saying these numbers should be adjusted?
Well, I'm just bringing this to light because you mentioned that, you know, there was, some of that had to go through the sewer. Some of that water was actually used even though it was always reported as a leak.
I had a discussion with the water commissioner concerning typical water bills at Five West Street and was told they were in a two hundred and fifty dollar range for sewer and water supply and typical, of course, I had never got a water bill before, but I was told that that was typical. That's why, where, and I included a copy of a previous bill to show a hundred and forty-two dollars was roughly.
Did you have a choice? Did you have a motion?
I was just going to accept the collector's suggestion.
Is there a second?
Ed's seconded.
Okay, so we're willing to abate, the motion is to abate you, one thousand seven hundred ninety-six dollars and fifty-seven cents on water, three thousand seven hundred and four dollars and eighty cents on your sewer bill. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All who oppose? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Don't you love it? You love the audit?
Oh, my God. All right, so how are these numbers going to get, how's this going to get converted so he understands it? Is she going to resend the bill with these numbers now?
So what we do is we fill in the abatement forms, which then are processed by water and sewer and the collectors and, and you'll be paying the bill that you will bill minus the abatement.
Yeah. I requested an official bill, but I was told I couldn't have that last time. Is that the case? I don't get a new bill?
When did you say last time?
From my first bill, they didn't send me a new bill. They just gave me the abatement, I think. Are you saying the same thing? I'm not going to get a new bill?
No, no, because I think the first bill you hadn't paid and you've, you've since paid it and you paid the abated amount. So I think you have not paid for this second bill.
Right.
All right, so you'll pay the abated amount for...
I don't know how much. I just, my question is, will I get an actual piece of paper with a new number on it?
Yeah.
Great, that would be great. That'd be great.
Appreciate it.
All right, so since we're doing abatements, we have one for French?
Same thing we have on the, from the collector's office for number six French Street, to bait the water in the amount of three thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars and ninety-six cents and to abate the sewer in the amount of seven thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars and fifteen cents.
So what caused this one?
This one was a pipe that was frozen, split, leaking and was actually coming out of the cellar. Cellar window going into North Hadley Pond for a period of time. So I guess the heat was shut off there, this house. There was someone living in there, but I guess you didn't realize it, but that's where the ball is, why I know on this one. The average usage on this one, total usage was two hundred fifteen thousand six hundred cubic feet. And she calculated it out, what it would come out to be, and the total amount of the abatement should be three thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars, which I mentioned earlier, for the water. And sewer is the larger abatement because I believe she felt that since it was running out the window, it did not actually be used to go through the sewer system. That was actually just a tremendous major leak.
So shall we charge her storm work instead?
We have to come up with a D schedule first.
I think this was an extreme hardship case.
Yeah.
She didn't know she was doing this? This is another one where...
Never bubbled up because it went right in the pond.
Went right in the pond.
From her cellar. Blown right out the back like a stream. Two hundred and sixteen thousand cubic feet.
If it was blown out the back.
How did you guys ever come up with the two twenty-five per cubic feet for the abatement? Is that, is that a base cost for...
Yeah, if you want to use the lowest rate, I believe on that.
Okay.
That's in line with how we addressed Mr. Brennan the first time he came to us. We did actually abate anything. We just charged the entire amount at the lowest rate that we can.
I make a motion, we accept the collector's recommendations for number six French Street.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? All right, so let's work on getting Mike out of here. Mike, you have a pay request?
Yep, for Schultz Construction, payment request number eleven. And I'll just briefly read what it was for. Installation of HVAC components, including the controls in the buildings, site grading, home seating placement, completion of pump skid assembly at pump station number one prior to startup. And then there's some for number four, installation of a low-grade pumping station, connection of mechanical piping, the low-grain station and the wet well at fifty connections to the force main. And the amount of the payment, I believe on the second page is sixty-one thousand three oh two point nine nine.
Are you comfortable with the work?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions, comments?
I would just like to give the board just a little brief of what's happening, what's going on there at pump station number one. We haven't had a construction progress meeting, so I asked the engineer to just give us some bullet points of what's left to do there. Schultz is currently working to demolish existing pumps, electrical equipment, existing stations, facilitate new generator, work remaining, generator installation, load bank testing, site grading, restoration, lining of existing wet well access. That's at pump station one. Pump station number four, they have to do, is currently working on a cleanup of the site from the previous excavations. As we know, the tide was just, occurred last week. Dig and lay, electrocuff, conduit to the new station, install electrical panels, connect, discharge piping from new station, construct access platform to new station, construct bypass connection to the precast panels, start up the new pump station, demolish existing pump station, and then the extra site grading and finished work to be done on that one. So that's what they have left to do for work.
Estimated completion date?
I believe it's the end of July. They asked for a extension on that, David, did they not?
That's right, so substantial completion by end of July, final payment by end of August.
Okay. This completes how much of our payment schedule?
We have five percent retainage, which we have them to start the pain out on, I believe, for another sixty thousand dollars left.
Should be on there.
It's right there, first page.
That's way off, two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That includes the retainage. Oh, no, plus retainage. Plus retainage associated.
Yeah, that's plus retainage.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, you wish to talk to us about sludge?
Franklin County enclosed the sludge hauling and disposal pricing for FY sixteen. The district has decided to maintain the current administrative fee charged for FY sixteen. And on the second page, the third page, second page, the memorandum of understanding that the board has to sign on the third page is the sludge hauling cost for July one, two thousand fifty to June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, actually for Hadley and Hatfield. So we looked at these prices and what we've been using is the one on the very bottom, which is the Montague indisposal facility at Montague. And the transportation cost per nine thousand gallons is two hundred eighty-five dollars. We broke that down to match per gallon with the other people have proposed for prices and it comes out to point zero, point three zero eight eight, which is the most of all the people that put in their prices board. So I believe the board has to sign this to get this one reviewed and open to Montague.
How's that compare to last year's numbers?
Last year's was two seventy-eight and the dry disposal cost for last year was three oh four.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any more, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Mike, do you have anything else?
Just the roof, but David, actually it's for Gary Berg of the senior center.
Go ahead.
I talked to Gary Berg about it. He says everything is up to code on it and I believe that the building inspector, as you said, signed off on it for payment.
Number five?
Buildings.
I believe that's what David mentioned something about it.
I'm sorry, I wasn't paying.
For the...
Riffet.
For the riffet.
Two side of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
The building inspector's okay with it?
Yes, so, yes, we've received the inspection on the, on the project, so that, that project is now complete.
Right, and I spoke with Gary Berg and he's pleased to go across.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, we'll start at the bottom and work our way back up. So we have our annual appointments. We need to make some appointments tonight. Did I misplace my list?
They were in the office, so they should be on newspaper.
Yeah, it's probably right here, but I misplaced it.
I'm sorry, I probably grabbed it on you.
You have two?
I'm just kidding. Trying to help cheer her up.
Thank you. Okay, so we need to do all these appointments tonight or are we going to do some of these tonight?
Well, you have, you have one more bite at the apple. On July first, you're meeting again. You can reappoint everybody on July first, so...
Can we make that part of the consent agenda?
If we can, if we want.
And we presented you with this information at the last meeting. You can take a little bit more time if you need it.
So is there any concerns we have about any of the appointments or lack of appointments?
Mike composed it. What's not filled?
Yeah, we have a cemetery committee for Old Hadley and Plainville. There's a vacancy there.
But are there people maintaining it or not?
There are. Any, any?
No, I didn't, I didn't have any issues with it.
We have a vacancy in the agricultural area incentive committee?
They're not on there anymore, are they?
They're around there, they're not active.
What about David Mosky? Is he still on the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission?
So capital planning, who, did anybody replace Mr. Aquadro in the capital planning and financing?
That would be Linda Kenna.
So we need to make that change.
CPA has no positions.
There's three vacancies in the long-range planning implementation committee.
That's been defunct, last meeting.
So we don't want to reappoint them?
I think they asked to be co-stagnant, dormant? I don't know the right word.
Laid down.
Laid down.
It just has cruel connotations to it. Laying down a committee. So we're going to take that one off the list?
At their request.
Okay.
Isn't the, on the agricultural commission, isn't there a...
Historical agricultural council.
Agricultural commission, didn't we appoint the Coucheois boy? Wasn't he on the agricultural commission? Do we appoint him this year? I don't see his name on there.
I'm trying to dredge up his name, trying to...
I know we appointed him to the agricultural commission.
Yeah, and he's been active on it. Is his name out there?
His name is not here.
Okay.
Coucheois from Overdrive, Matt, is it? Yeah, the Coucheois.
That's it, that's the name.
Matt Couche.
So then if we do this as an agenda calendar item, I would just ask that we actually put the date on here. We have June twenty-fourth being on it, number one we have on our hands. So just appointments. All right.
So we're going to do this as a consent agenda for July first.
Yeah. What the right names on?
With those changes and dating it. Okay, so new item number four, we need to accept Mr. Cireo's resignation from HPAT Advisory Committee?
I'd like to have the board send a letter of thanks to Pat for his participation on the HPAT Advisory Committee. He's a healthy wife. We thank him for volunteering.
Second thought?
Any other discussion? All those in favor accepting any of the resignation?
Aye.
All right. Town Administrator Annual Review, discussion of the evaluation format and presentation information. So we have an update from the town administrator on his goals and objectives and that's for us to have our discussion on July one. So any questions about what was going... So if you have any questions about what was good to you, please email it into the town administrator between now and July one.
I believe there's also a form that you had circulated, and I just produced it here in the book.
It didn't go to the full, it only went to you and Gilford for comments, so this is the first time.
The first.
Yeah, this is for us to talk over and decide.
Right, but this is their first seeing of this.
So the form is also up for discussion as to whether it's appropriate or complete for this purpose.
Okay. And just quick background, this was a form that David had sent a couple of form, two different formats. They were similar, yet different. So the only thing that I did was tried to backfill in these key objectives, key responsibilities, took the goals that we had agreed on at the beginning of the year and tried to kind of condense them and fit them into these expectations. Right? So, and then you had a chance to look at it, and you said that you were okay with it.
So then, do we want to go ahead and have them to make our rough comments for the July first meeting as well? That's.
Rough comments for?
On the, on his.
Form, or his goals?
Actually, on the form. Because we were going to have him present his, we have his goals and objectives as he is now. And he's going to talk more about those on the July first meeting.
Yep.
And then if we have any comments on the form, we should have those for the next meeting, too.
Yeah, on the form, but we wouldn't be doing our actual.
No, we're not doing our.
Okay.
It's getting late.
Yeah.
So we're, so we're doing edits to the form?
Yes.
Edit the form, yeah.
On the evaluation.
The percentage here that, of the weight, I mean, is that apropos? It's my first look at it, too. I mean, is that?
Yeah, and Jerry, I will tell you, the only thing I did with the weighting was I literally just, well, that second group are organizational standards.
Yes.
And so I just simply divided, they had a, like a fifty percent, fifty percent is the starting point.
Okay.
So I just took fifty divided by the five objectives. And then on the first part of it, you can see it wound up being twelve and a half percent because there were only four. So I didn't, I'm not suggesting applying any particular heavier weighting to one over the other, but that's certainly a part of this.
Okay, so I've also, last week, the select board asked me to do a weekly summary of where we are with our major projects, so I took a stab at that. You asked me to keep this to one page, and I managed to keep it to three. So that provides additional information. The chair had asked me to also set up a calendar for the fire chiefs' goals and objectives. And I believe we have that set up for July fifteenth for his presentation. And then finally, during the contract negotiations with the chief of police, you had identified the town administrator as the person who'd worked with the chief of police on goals and objectives. So I had a conversation with Chief Mason about that and asked him to start preparing his goals and objectives for the coming years.
All right, excellent. Any comments about the weekly project updates?
I just saw it tonight, but I found it immediately helpful. So, so my only comment right now?
Yeah, happy to do it.
So then my, my comment, if we are okay with this format, is that this is probably something we should go ahead and put on the, on the town webpage. So this is the, this is the report from the town administrator to the select board. We can put it on the, on the webpage as, you know, this is updated at this, this time period, and that way the people can look at it as well, see how things are going. Because it would take quite a while to read all this, all about.
Yeah, but is there anything on here that lends itself to, there would be anything on here that would be?
This is a public document, so there's no reason why it couldn't go on the website. Only sensitive issues are with the collective bargaining agreements and the two personnel issues listed under legal.
Right.
I think I've just, I've been in general in my language.
Yeah, okay.
Are we meeting next Tuesday?
I believe we are, I believe we are.
Okay, we did speak with John.
I'll confirm that.
Okay, I'll check in with you tomorrow.
Yep.
I'm actually off Thursday and Friday, so.
You're not going north?
No, I'm going north this week. I have it until three on Friday, so if you wanted to meet on Friday, I'm not sure with John.
I'll have to check in with John. I know that she's taking time right now.
Okay. All right, still planning for Tuesday then.
Oops. Okay, so for, when you talk about our next meetings. So we've already scheduled a July first meeting, which is also the tri-board meeting.
Tri-board, that's correct.
So we have scheduled a July fifteenth meeting. We've only done two for July.
Oh, I thought we had the eighth, too.
And we put the.
The eighth is also the night of the town reception with the transwords, so you can meet on the eighth, but just be aware of that.
Last year, I think we weren't able to go because we received the invitation somewhat late, and we have a scheduled meeting, right? So it would be nice to be able to go.
The, the RFI's are coming in already?
So the RFI is due on August third. I have received an inquiry or two. We did talk about that during the pre-bid conference this morning with members of the municipal building committee.
I mean, they're, they're just public inquiries, so they should be available to the building committee and to us, I suppose.
Sure. The building committee asked that if we received any written responses on the RFI for property, that they see them as they come in. Given that this is not a procurement process, there's no reason why we couldn't do that.
Okay, so in the meetings, so right now we just have two, two meetings in July.
The first, and there's a subcommittee meeting in the morning, right, with the town? Molly, you're meeting with the town?
Yeah, on the first.
Okay.
And you're going to come keep me company?
I am.
All right, I've prepared the agenda for that, so.
If I could get a copy, please, by your convenience.
We'll be doing the asbestos discussion, and then we'll do the calendar discussion.
All right.
First and the what?
Fifteenth. And if we decide on the first or fifteenth we want to try another one, we can try, we can do that, or we cannot. So then August, the first meeting would be the fifth.
Yeah.
And the twelfth and nineteenth. Can we try to get the back on the twelfth as being there working?
Summertime.
Do you want to just do two?
Yeah.
You're, you're welcome.
Well, it says the fifth and the twelfth in here.
You're welcome to meet on the nineteenth, but I will not be here.
Oh, that's why we did the fifth and the twelfth. We skipped the nineteen, twenty-six. Okay. And then September second and ninth, and the sixth, September, we crank back up?
Yeah.
First day of school is going to be September second. Fourth day is September seventh.
Is that what we're doing, the second?
Second, ninth, and sixteenth.
So the ninth is going to be, we were choosing the first meeting as select, as tri-board?
Usually it is.
So that'll be the six o'clock on the second.
Tri-board on second, is that it?
Yes. Okay.
Okay, so on the eighth, then, if we choose to, we can go to Hillside.
Yes. The first, July first will be in here, the fifteenth will be at a place to be determined.
That's correct.
Okay.
We could do that.
What's this about?
That's over a dime.
Okay.
So we have one item left.
Yes.
Net metering credits.
So we have a second opportunity to sign up for net metering credits. Just a little bit of history, about two years ago, we had an opportunity through the SREC one program, a solar renewable energy certificate, one program, to sign up seventy percent of the town load for electrical consumption under a solar agreement, which would give a twenty-one percent discount on that seventy percent. Now, that seventy percent is represented by five buildings, the two schools, the two treatment plants, the public safety complex. And this is expected to provide savings in electrical energy costs over a twenty-year period between three hundred thousand and six hundred thousand dollars. We're well on our way to meeting a number well within that range. You know, it's not as, not as low as three hundred. I won't say it's quite as high as six hundred. But it's a very good program for us, and so now we have a partner with Nexamp that we have some history with. That's with, the SREC one program was through the three mega-watt facility that is on Nelveda Road that is operated by, developed and operated by Nexamp. So they're building a second facility of comparable size, and we're looking at the remaining thirty percent of our electrical load, which consists of the nine sewer pump stations, the most of the rest of the municipal buildings, such as Count Hall, the library, the senior center, Russell School, not North Hadley Village Hall, recognizing that we're going to be selling at the highway garage, as well as the streetlights, which would represent about thirty percent of our remaining electrical load. We have an opportunity through an SREC two program, which provides a lower discount, sixteen percent, better than twenty-one percent. And these, these percentages are capped by state law, so we, we don't have any real control over that. But we've been working with Nexamp and our attorney in order to develop the net metering credit program, which would cover that remaining thirty percent of our electrical load and result in a twenty-year savings of minimum ninety-three thousand dollars. So I make a recommendation that we sign up.
Any other, any questions, concerns, comments?
You said this already went through legal review and.
Yeah.
We did it before, Joe. I make a motion to accept the net metering credits.
My second is for discussion.
Discussion, Mr. Revine.
If, if something else comes down the road three years from now, and it's a much better opportunity for us, did we just slit our throat? Are there any availabilities for us to get out of these if opportunities arise?
Yeah, so there is a bailout provision, but it's not an easy one to, to utilize if we have just a better offer down the road. I don't see better offers coming down the road under SREC. We were lucky to get twenty-one percent over the first program. Sixteen percent is right in the market for the second program. In future years, people are going to be fighting over ten and five percent.
So there is a cost to get out if it did occur?
Yes.
Okay. And what does that entail?
We would, we would, in effect, be partnering with another municipality to sell our portion of the electricity credits to them with the help of Nexamp in order to carry out that deal. So in effect, we would be transferring this agreement over to some other town and be in, and then we'd be able to enter into some other agreement.
Do we need that town to, obviously, we need that town to buy into it.
Yes.
And if they have better options available, why would they do that?
Right.
So in effect, there is no outlet.
Well, breach of contract.
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
No, we don't.
That brings, breach of contract brings up another issue. So our original, we sold our original percentage of electricity to the Nexamp project that's also partnered with the COG. So if the COG goes under, does that program and those credits still come to us?
Yes, they do. The only thing that the COG receives under first net metering credit program is a small payment, a subsidized payment to them for their services in negotiating the first agreement. So that would be the only change, that we wouldn't be paying the COG, would not nullify the agreement.
Okay. So if we actually, what we're saying now is if we do this, we've allocated almost all of our usage.
It gives you, it doesn't give you much room to go out on the market again for anything else. But it does give you enough room so that if you wanted to do energy conservation, there's some room for you to do that.
Would you need this answered by?
It would be nice if I had it, you know, later than July first.
It was open ended the last time, because I remember I had brought up a couple of scenarios where they were to solar panel Hopkins and it became self-sufficient, or there was another one over at the elementary school, something big enough where it sustained itself. That option was always open to us.
Yeah, but you work on, work on a solar panel Hopkins or elementary.
How do you know?
Because the roofs are too old. Unless we do new roofs in those, then we would solar panel them.
Hopkins does have a new roof.
Well, it's still, but we didn't do it then.
It's flat.
Landfill?
Yeah.
And it's flat.
Yeah, you got a landfill.
And you've got metal roofs.
The issue with the landfill is that it's too far from any power lines that can handle a load like that. You'd have to string a mile and a half of line to access a landfill. Other than that, I would do it in a heartbeat.
So what do I think about?
I do want, I'd like, I know there's a motion, a second on the floor, but I would actually like this brought back to us on the first of July so that we can ask a few questions.
Do you want to draw your motion?
I don't know, I don't see what for, but I don't care.
We need to vote it up or down, or we can draw.
Yeah, do what you want, I don't care.
You can draw your second.
I have respect for our Steve colleague. I was drawing second.
Okay. So we'll talk about, we'll talk about it again on the, on the first.
There we go. Be the difference, I don't care.
Okay, so announcements.
Got one question, so.
Oh, I, what did you say, announcements? Yes, I'd like to, to the family of Freddie Bender.
Kaharski.
Kaharski. I know the last name, I was taking my time. He was a fireman for many years in North Hadley, and served in the service, and loved to polka dance, had two hip replacements so he could keep polka dancing, and he certainly lived life to the fullest, so condolences to his family.
Anything else? Food, election?
Oh, yes, the election is coming up on Tuesday. Thank you.
All right.
Oh, special break.
So the election for the school bus and the police cruiser.
Polls are open from noon until eight on June twenty-third, Tuesday, over Hopkins Academy. People are encouraged to come out and vote. There are two items on the ballot. One is for the school bus for sixty-five thousand dollars, and the other is for a police cruiser for forty-two thousand dollars.
All right. Stay as far off Route nine as you can for the next two days.
Oh, I could, I could say about Cooley Dickinson is that we're, next Tuesday, the employees get to do a walkthrough, hard hat walkthrough for the new cancer care center that's being completed right now, and soon to be opening that pretty soon also, which is a great thing for this area.
It is.
John? Oh, nothing, I was just, the paving's going to be done between East Street and Spruce Hill Road, I believe. Of course, on Route nine, that they have ground dogs.
And Hancher County Relay to Life is on Saturday, Friday to Saturday.
At Look Park.
At Look Park. So please join them if you can.
All right. So is there another motion we wish to make?
The chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Good night, everybody, and we'll see you on July first.